Good morning, and we'll call to order the meeting of the Clark County Regional Transportation Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Quigley.
Members of the Commission, your agenda is in order. We do need to recommend pulling items number 21 and 40 today. But other than that, the agenda is ready for your approval.
Motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission, your next item is item number two, to receive the General Manager's Report, and we do have some things to report to you. First of all, I'd like to start out by taking a moment to acknowledge longtime RTC employee, Sue Joseph. Sue's been at the RTC for 22 years, and will retire in just a few weeks. Actually, I just learned today. It's her lucky 13. She'll be retiring in 13 days from today. On behalf of the RTC, I'd like to acknowledge her for her hard work and dedication to the organization over the last two decades. Sue has been here since the start of our transit system. She was one of very few employees. At the time, the RTC had very, probably 10 or less employees, and she was part of a team that started the entire transit system. At the time, it was called CAT. She has been the director over our paratransit system for several years. She has established a great reputation in Southern Nevada for her caring, and her compassion, and her competence in managing that program. I have personally learned a lot from her when I first came to the RTC. She is one of the people who mentored me and taught me a lot about transit and paratransit in particular. It is a loss to lose her and her historical knowledge, but we are very excited for her. She'll be starting a new life with her husband. They've built a house in San Felipe, Mexico, Baja, and they will be, their house will be completed in January, and they are going to become expats. So, we congratulate her, and I'd like to ask her to come up so you can present an award to her.
(applause)
You're coming to visit.
Yeah.
I'm gonna miss you.
We can have a board meeting down there.
Yeah.
One.
It's a separate casino, so.
We can stay in one.
Yeah.
Let's get a good look here, too.
Come on up, you guys.
He's gone through it all with me, that's for sure.
And he was mine.
They left my alderhood.
Two commissioners that they claim are sisters.
They failed on her neighbors.
They did.
They went up.
That was up there.
That's why she comes.
(laughter).
You can't leave. You can't leave.
Well, I'll try to keep this short, because I'm not sure I can make it all the way through. This is about one-third of my entire work career, so I have a lot of memories, and I look out in the audience, and I have probably stories about every single person, which I won't tell. Starting up a system like this is a dream job. A lot of things I still look around and see. I see that we're there in the beginning, and that we've just only enhanced on them and made them better. The RTC is in a better place than it was when I started, and I know it will continue to move in that direction. So, thank you all for helping me in my career, and I'm gonna miss you. Bye-bye.
I'd also like to recognize real quickly that Lois Tarkanian, Councilwoman Tarkanian, is joining us via phone, so she is with us as well. Next in the General Manager's Report, Jerry Keating, Assistant General Manager, will provide an update on our safety and security efforts.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to provide you with an update on the safety and security enhancements that we've made since our last report in May. And we certainly appreciate your approval and your support in creating those safety enhancements. If you remember, in May, we came to you and told you that we had 39 buses with three, sorry, 39 routes with 345 buses, and we had 12 officers per shift. We had one roving patrol team. Since that time, we have increased security to 13 officers per shift and seven roving patrol teams that are currently out on the street. In addition, you approved that we look at various types of safety enclosures, and it is our goal to have all 408 coaches with driver enclosures by the beginning of summer in 2015. At the current time, we will be installing enclosures on many of our routes in the next week or so as test enclosures to see how those enclosures work with our drivers and/or our passengers. I recently had the opportunity to spend some time in Europe over the last couple of weeks, and I was actually very excited to hear from the drivers, as well as the passengers, how those safety enclosures have enhanced their customer service experience while in Europe. The drivers feel much more protected, and there had not been one bus that I was on, whether it was in London or Ireland, that did not have a safety enclosure. And we are really excited about adding those safety enclosures here in the valley to protect our operators. When we test these enclosures, we are going to be asking the drivers for input on those buses. We are going to be doing surveys with our passengers. Our safety and security team is going to go out there and ensure that those enclosures meet all of the standards when it comes to bus driver safety, as well as passenger safety. As you know, the RTC continues to work on improving our relationships with our contractors, our operators, our security officers, and our law enforcement. We continue to have quarterly meetings, quarterly focus groups, with our drivers and our contractors from both a security standpoint and a safety standpoint. The last meeting we had was on September 3rd, and I can tell you, I was approached by no less than five operators that were excited about the safety enclosures coming onboard, and all requests for them to be placed on their routes. Recommendation four was to move Allied Barton Dispatch into the Keelis and MV Bus Operations Centers. We have certainly done that. That was completed in early June, and I will tell you that the communication between the drivers when they contact their bus operations centers and Allied Barton has been increased significantly, and our response times are much quicker than they were before. However, I want to caution everybody that, since it's been so early, we are monitoring stats, but I don't want to bring those stats back until we have enough data to share with the Board the accurate increase that has occurred since we've done that. I continue to stress and thank you for your support in enhancing the safety and security of our system. We have seen the improvements. We have seen the improvements with our rapid response teams out there that are on the road to assist our drivers when we can't get law enforcement there in a quick enough timeframe. And I want to thank you again for your continued support, and assure you that we will continue to come back to the Board with updates on a periodic basis to show with you the successes that we have seen over the past few months. Willing to take any questions, Mr. Chairman?
Comments or questions from the Board? Commissioner G.
Could you just clarify, which ones are you testing? The hinged one?
We are, let me see. It is a slider. It's the slider that goes back and forth that they can open and close. I think the hinged one was impeding our ADA requirements, so we've had Bentec, who's the company that does them pretty much nationwide for New York Transit and Milwaukee, come out and do the test models. Again, they're here next week. I think the 17th is when they're gonna go ahead and install them. If you want, I'll be more than happy, once they're installed, to talk to the General Manager and have her let the Board know that they've been installed, so you can go out and take a look at them if you'd like as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have MJ Maynor, Assistant General Manager, give you an update on her discussions with her driver focus groups, and also give a report card as we celebrate the one-year anniversary of switching from.
Ask her to put it on mute. Okay? Good morning, Chairman, Board members. I'd like to take just a few more minutes to provide you with a transit update regarding our ongoing driver focus group operations and maintenance. As Jerry mentioned, we continue to hold quarterly focus groups with our transit operators, and have been doing so for the past two years. We've heard a lot from the operators. They truly are the day-to-day operational experts, and their feedback and suggestions have, in many cases, greatly enhanced the service we provide to our customers. Some examples of input from the operators and the corresponding action taken by the RTC include: the RTC producing a whole new series of tourist brochures based on great suggestions from the drivers; bus stop sign improvements that are now more user-friendly; adjustments made to various transit schedules in order to give the drivers more time. If you remember Mrs. Barbara Powell, now a Keelis driver, who complained that she didn't have enough time or schedule well, we rode the bus with her, and she was right, so we made changes to her schedule. We also heard from the drivers that they wanted better customer information inside the bus. Because of their input, we took a different perspective on how to effectively communicate with our passengers. Other operator input included bus stops that weren't safe or weren't in the right place, and where we could, we made those suggested changes. We've heard about issues with equipment, safety-related concerns, our fare policy, security both on and off the bus, layover location problems, just to name a few, and we do whatever we can to rectify those concerns. Additionally, the operators confirmed what we suspected, and that was we didn't have enough TVMs in the resort corridor, and those TVMs were not user-friendly. What did we do with that information? We are now investing over $2 million to improve TVM connectivity in this corridor. We are currently testing a new, user-friendly TVM that we hope to install in the future. During the most recent meeting held last week on September 3rd, we are pleased to note that because of feedback from the operators, we were able to potentially create a fix on the vehicles to allow drivers to adjust the volume of the audio announcements to account for changes in noise level on the buses. We are also going to improve the bus stop sign placement at the wind, and next week, our transit amenities team will be placing a new transit shelter on Flamingo Road across from Desert Springs Hospital. Both efforts will improve access for passengers and vehicles. We truly appreciate the operators of both MV and Keelis, their insightful input and for their dedication and hard work. Commissioners, it's been a little more than a year since this Board made the decision to hire new fixed route contractors and split the service and maintenance yards. I'm happy to confirm that your direction has resulted in very positive outcomes. As noted on the slide, we've compared previous to current fixed route contractors for the month of June 2013 compared to June of 2014. If you look at the table labeled "On Time Performance" or OTP, and in the left-hand column, you can see that Veolia's June 2013, five-minute OTP was 88 percent, meaning Veolia arrived at the bus stop within five minutes of the scheduled arrival time 88 percent of the time, and arrived at the bus stop within 10 minutes of the scheduled arrival time 95.5 percent of the time. Compare that to the improved on-time performance of both Keelis and MV in June 2014, with Keelis meeting the five-minute OPT standard 89.3 percent of the time, and the 10-minute standard at 96.6 percent. MV's on-time performance was even slightly better at 89.5 percent and 96.6 percent respectively. Compare that to the ridership numbers in the next table, and note an increase in ridership in all routes year-over-year, including the resort corridor. In June of 2013, Veolia transported 1,145,420 customers in the resort corridor compared to Keelis transporting 1,154,051 customers in June of 2014. As you can see, both on-time performance standards have improved, while ridership has increased. Okay, Jerry, the next slide. Thank you. Additionally, as noted in the table "Maintenance Overview," Veolia's revenue miles traveled in June of 2013 was 1,272,616 miles compared to the increase in miles for Keelis and MV in June of 2014 at 1,451,36 miles. The associated total road calls compared to the miles traveled in revenue service, otherwise known as miles between road calls, saw a marked decrease with our new contractors. Miles between road calls is an industry-standard maintenance metric used to assess dependability. Keelis and MV only had 134 road calls compared to Veolia's 313 road calls in June of 2013, a sign of increased service dependability on the part of our new service contractors. In the next table labeled "Customer Comment Snapshot," the total overall number of comments received on behalf of Veolia's service, I don't know if you can see this. Nope. Okay. You can't actually see it, but the total overall number of comments received on behalf of Veolia's service was 1,020 comments compared to 888 comments received on behalf of MV and Keelis. As you can see, or if you could see, the number of comments recorded by RTC's customer service team has decreased year-over-year, an indication of service improvements. Our thanks to both MV and Keelis for all their efforts to sustain and improve the service we offer our fixed route customers. I'm available for questions if you have any.
Councilwoman, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman. I appreciate this report, and I think it's valuable for us to kind of get a lens in on what's going on in the system, and I'd like to suggest that maybe we do these on a quarterly basis, so we can have an update on what's going on in the system. And I also think it's valuable that we continue to have the focus groups, because I think it's a healthy and constructive way to get feedback on how the system is operating from the perspective of the drivers as well. Thank you.
My apologies. Other comments or questions? Thank you.
The Councilwoman duly noted, and we will come back regularly with reports on our upcoming committee. With that, that concludes your General Manager's Report. We can move on to item number three, which is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's report from Director Rudy Nelson.
Thank you, Tina.
Pardon me, Rudy.
Yes.
I am, I know you're gonna be disappointed, but I have to excuse myself from the meeting attending the 911 ceremony at the place memorial, but I did want to leave you with one nugget. We need your help, and I sincerely mean this. We need your help because we, we, the RTC, are having some obstacles placed in the way regarding I-11, and not with your staff that have been wonderful, but with some of the staff members, team members at FHWA out of Carson City. I'm sure Tina, or Mike, or Fred could give you some of the details, but it's one of those things that we've worked so hard, we have gotten back on track, and yet someone deep in the bowels of bureaucracy is dragging you and the RTC backwards from what appears to be just absolutely ludicrous. So, I ask you, and I apologize, because I haven't had a chance, I just found out about this just the last few days, but we do need your help. If you could intervene and perhaps light a fire under whoever's backside needs to be lit on, would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Chairman.
Is that all right, Mike? That was fine?
Thank you. And Chairman Brown, before you leave, thank you for representing us today at the 9/11 event, and as we all catch freedom is free, and we appreciate the fact that your son serves our country, and so thank you very much for sharing with us. Rudy?
Thank you. And we are aware of those concerns, Chairman Brown and others on the Board. We are discussing that with Federal Highway Administration Division Office. A lot to cover today, obviously. We'll get to Interstate 15 update by Deputy Director Tracy Markham Thomas, and we'll provide that a little bit later. As far as the big news announcement yet last Thursday about Tesla selecting the Tahoe Reno Industrial Center has implications for NDOT in terms of our payment for improvements to USA Parkway, the road that serves that area that we've been studying for connection to between I-80 and US-50, and it's currently identified as a state highway for a portion of it, but we've been doing the environmental clearance for the rest of it. I wanted to make it clear that the payment for the right-of-way improvements on that road has been reported as $43 million to the press. That has no impact on our construction program for projects here in Southern Nevada across the state. The RTC paid an additional $100 million bonding for Project NEON that we received right-of-way. It gave us a lot more leeway in our state highway fund to absorb that additional cost.
With your permission, I'd be stopped there to clarify. So, there will be no Project NEON funding going towards anything northern Nevada regarding Tesla or USA Parkway in any way, shape, or form. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's no NEON funding toward the Tesla.
Thank you, Rudy, on the Project NEON portion. So, the initial $100 million that's being for bonding, what is the source then that pays off that bond? Is that the highway fund?
Yes.
How much is it?
Fuel tax revenue.
And how much is it the highway fund?
Currently about $207 million in the highway fund, and then additionally, the $100 million off the property assets.
Okay. And that $100 million, because I know the phases have changed again, is to purchase the right-of-way on MLP then? Is that part where the apartments and all that is off of Chardeston?
Yes.
So, it's that next section? Because you already purchased the part to the south, right by the church and that? So, it's that component?
We've deposited funds with the court for purchasing the property, so it might not be settled yet. It might be additional money for that southern portion to still settle.
Okay, and that will relocate any of those small businesses that are locked there?
Yes.
Does it go up to Bonneville? Is that the core?
There's, the way that the money was programmed was that any right-of-way related expense, so procuring the right-of-way, demolishing any existing buildings, relocating folks, any kind of rental payments. For instance, we don't want a property owner to rent out when we're acquiring the property, so we pay that out of that right-of-way fund as well.
And then there's a rehab hospital right behind the apartments. Is that staying?
We're not that familiar with that one. I know about West Care, we typically work with any affected properties to relocate them and find a good location for them, relocate them, and we pay those relocation expenses.
Okay. My staff covered the last meeting, so they may have covered this part, but I'll see if I can get them to. I just want to know, because in the middle of the discussion with Councilwoman Tarkanian, we're looking at the sort of Madison, we just needed to know what, how far and what depth, and then that might give us some additional property that we could do parking or something. So, we were just trying to figure out what it is. So, I think Kimberly from her office was going to be the chief. Who is still the project manager?
Cole Mortensen is.
It is still Cole. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Ross.
Yeah, one more question, I'll check. Rudy, and maybe Tina, this is a question. Do we have the RTC funding in Project NEON at all?
The RTC funding is, the city of Las Vegas has some bridge over Martin Luther King that they're, they have an agreement with NDOT to pay for that portion of the project, the bridge itself. NDOT is paying for Martin Luther King, because had it not been for the freeway widening, Martin Luther King wouldn't have to be moved over, so that's an NDOT issue.
Any federal funds tied to Project NEON?
Yes, the way that we programmed, it's eligible for federal reimbursement, but we were using the bond funds and then getting, using our federal revenue for years to come to offset some of those costs on an annual basis going forward to pay back the bonds.
I know we're restricted by NRS to regards to selectiveness of contractors and employees, but I mean, it is a paramount interest to all of us, including you. I would assume that Nevada employers and Nevada workers are on this, on this project when the time comes, and I'm just concerned about the federal restrictions that may be associated with that, if any, and would highly encourage whoever, however you guys do this, and Cole already knows this, because I've talked to him about it, but moving forward and hiring those local firms, local engineers, local vendors, and that sort of thing, and it was difficult to do that, but I'd certainly like us to do our best part to make that happen.
Sure, and I'll, let me wrap up a little bit about NEON associated with, the Transportation Board approved a design-build approach with bonding instead of the P3 approach. That was done, action on August 18th. So, NDOT will issue a new request for qualifications, which will allow new teams. I've been contacted by local engineering companies, and I know that local contractors are probably discussing forming teams to chase this Project NEON project, which had three pre-qualified teams for the public-private partnership approach, but we felt that it was fair to open it up again. The three teams that are currently pre-qualified will have, they'll have more knowledge about the project and the ability to pre-qualify again, but it was a different scope of work without the private financing and the operation and maintenance element over that 35-year term. We felt that it was important to just make it start from scratch again, allow it to be open, and follow our normal process, normal timeframes for requests for qualifications to be issued October 1st, and then about seven weeks to make that determination, that shortlist, to get the calls in.
I would assume this is all covered under federal, I mean, not federal, state prevailing wage?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Rudy?
Yes.
Oh, you had a question? I'm sorry.
Sorry. So, Rudy, the $100 million bond was only for the continued purchase of the right-of-way. What is actually funded for, I forget what phase, to actually begin any kind of construction?
For the construction phase, we have submitted a budget with bonding, a bonding request for the next session of the legislature to consider. We feel that that will be supported, because we show that with Bond Council's report that it is affordable for the annual bond.
And that was about $500 million? Or was, am I thinking?
We, it's based on the cash flow. We anticipated about $250 million in bonds for the next biennium to cover that two years of construction, and then subsequent to that, the next biennium will have the last bit of that work. We're thinking that it's about a half a billion-dollar project as a design-build.
And then, maybe that's for the 500. And so, that would be, you'd be able to start the offset for the Martin Luther King merge? Or is that the HOV portion that goes? The phase has changed again, so I'm just...
Yes, I'd have to have our project managers reading it.
And then, you're confident, because I have concerns about the Tesla agreement, and I will make no bones, that the $100 million is mostly generated from the city of Nevada, so I'd just like to make sure that projects go forward that are actually construction jobs, which it won't necessarily be, and that we have the ability, we don't have somebody turn around later and say, oh, well, we don't have the bonding capacity, because there's a threshold that the heavy's going to have to stay at.
Typically, we try to stay about $90 million at the end of the state fiscal year.
Of each pay-down fiscal year. So, you have bonding capacity still, then?
Yes, what we learned was with the AAA rating that we received in January with the $100 million bond sale, and tailoring the bond payments so that we pay interest-only initially in this tight four-year period, we pay off a series of bonds, and we have more bond capacity, and so we found that it was affordable in that pinch point of four years that we originally thought that we couldn't afford.
Okay. And what I just said, it's mostly, it's in my commission district, it's mostly in the city, and I just want to make sure we don't tear down things and move people, relocate, and then it just all sits there.
No, that's not gonna happen.
And that's a concern that everybody is trying to...
If that would occur, that would be disastrous for the department, and we'd have to pay back the federal funds that we received.
Right, no matter what.
Definitely, this project, we looked at every possibility of the risks associated with the right-of-way construction, and we feel that it's affordable in other bonding scenarios.
Yeah, I think the CMR was a better choice at this point. I do think, I'm glad you looked at the P3, but I don't think it can be numbered out as far as what you needed to do, so I think for protections, bodies. Thank you.
Thank you, all very good comments. Thank you, Rudy.
Yes. We'll shortlist three to five teams, which is our normal process, so most likely the three teams that are currently between the contractors and the engineering firms and the partnering team and subcontractors will submit a prequal that likely be pre-qualified again, and then you might see...
Pay down fiscal year. So, you have bonding capacity still then?
Yes. What we learned was with the AAA rating that we received in January with the $100 million bond sale, and tailoring the bond payments so that we pay interest only initially in this tight four-year period, we pay off a series of bonds and we have more bond capacity. And so, we found that it was affordable in that pinch point of four years that we originally thought that we couldn't afford.
Okay. And what I just said, it's mostly, it's in my commission district, it's mostly in the city. I just want to make sure we don't tear down things and move people, relocate, and then it just all sits there.
No, that's not going to happen.
And that's a concern that everybody is trying to...
If, if that would occur, that would be disastrous for the department, and we'd have to pay back the federal funds that we received.
Right, no matter what.
Definitely this project, we, we looked at every possibility of the risks associated with the right-of-way construction, and we feel that it's affordable in other bonding scenarios.
Yeah, I think the C-MR was a better choice at this point. I do think, I'm glad you looked at the P-3, but I don't think it can't be numbered out as far as what you needed to do. So, I think for protections, bodies. Thank you.
Thank you. All very good comments. Thank you, Rudy.
We'll, we'll shortlist three to five teams, which is our normal process. So, most likely the three teams that are currently between the contractors and the engineering firms and the partnering team and subcontractors will submit a prequal that likely be pre-qualified again, and then you might see one or two additional design build teams bring up. As far as I-11, the, the West Corridor study was brought before, the final report was brought before the board this Monday, and they approved the Western Corridor on the list that fell between Las Vegas and Reno as the preferred route. I won't say the preferred alternative, because that's a NEPA, environmental term, as connotations that we've done in environmental impact statement and we have not. That'll take years to come to do the environmental studies required to develop that to construction. But I, I wanted to say that the, the next step would be to look at those three alternative corridors along 215, along 515, and on the east side corridor that starts in Henderson and goes up to by Nellis Air Force Base. The Lakeview National Recreational Area asked us not to show a line in their area. We modified our report to not show a route through that land. So, we will study the general area on the east side, but we removed a line on the map so that people wouldn't get an idea that it's going through a certain route when it's really just a broad area on the east side that we have to study. That will take, we're just wrapping up the current study phase on the west, on the corridor study, so that phase will be announced later at a future meeting when we do an RFP.
Do you have a timeline for that?
No, I would like to take a little breath, and I've asked the, the project manager to look at what are the fatal flaws in that eastern corridor first and kind of work that into some findings for my consideration, and then take some time. Next year, it'll be, we'll issue an RFP for the, the next phase of the study in the Las Vegas Valley for the north of where the construction is going to take place. The, as far as the construction project of Phase 1, that's NDOT's, we're going to advertise, we anticipate October 29th for a seven-week period. And that, we feel that we'll actually benefit from the RTC's design-build selection, anticipated at the December board meeting, that that contractor will bid our project and probably give us some benefit of already anticipating mobilization for that $300 million plus project on Phase 2. So, we'll, we'll be a direct beneficiary of, of that large project and them being in sync with one another. But we are going forward with ours. The, the public meeting for the reevaluation of the environmental study related to naturally occurring asbestos is going to be scheduled in, in October. We'll definitely announce that to the public and coordinate with Tina on that. The Cactus Interchange opened two months ahead of schedule recently on I-15. There will be a media event on September 19th, next Friday. The governor's going to make a trip down here for, for that recognition, and I wanted to thank Clark County Public Works for their, their efforts coordinating on this project. It was a joint project between our two agencies. With that, I'm going to ask Tracy to come up here and, and give a, a little update on I-15. Everybody down here knows about the, the situation with the, the road washing out on, on Monday with the, the huge amounts of rain in, in that area east of here. We anticipate that, that we're going to have at least the road open one lane each direction by tomorrow afternoon, but we have to consider some things like truck restrictions. When, as you recall, when trucks were in that situation of one lane each direction during the, the paving contract, they backed up traffic for miles, and we want to avoid that situation and, and consider what are the alternatives, but also consider the needs for local businesses to have commodities trucked in to them. So, we have to have more discussion with our, our district staff and Tracy, but Tracy's going to kind of give an update of the I-15 situation.
For the record, Tracy Larkin-Thomas, and I'm the Deputy Director for Nevada DOT. There you go. Just to give you an impression, this is what's showing at milepost, between milepost 91 and 93 on I-15. As most of you know, on Monday, we had about a, a little less than four inches of rain drop down in a little bit over an hour that wreaks a havoc particularly in the northeast part of Clark County. The main thing on I-15, and we just wanted to kind of give you an update, at the end of this week, as Rudy mentioned, the northbound lanes will be repaired. It'll be about midnight on Friday, frankly, so reality is you'll see one lane in each direction on, by Saturday. There will be barrier rail down the center, and then it'll be, they will start working on the southbound lanes. And the timeline for that will be approximately another week. I would count on probably seven to 10 days. Obviously, you can see there's a huge amount of damage. The water took out about 12 to 20 feet in most areas, completely undermined the roadway. In the meantime, the roads have been, the detours have been going to, down Valley of Fire Road and then over 169 back up. Commercial traffic has been going up 93 over to 319, which then goes into Utah 56 in Utah. Of these roads, we have asked for $5 million of emergency relief funds from FHWA. We are getting 1.5 million immediately released, so we should have that in the next few days, but basically to take care of current activities that we've been doing. We would like to point out that not only, it's 4.5 million for the repairs that you're seeing in front of you here, but the other 4.5 million is going to be used to also take care of the damage that's being done on SR-169 Valley of Fire and the things from the detour, because the, those roads were not built for the type of commercial activity that they're seeing now. So, we have taken that into consideration. At this time, we are not limited. We feel that we have covered all the costs at this point, but we are continually assessing the damage and seeing if there's other things that need to be taken care of. So, that's pretty much it. Just wanted to kind of give you an update of what you can expect to see. When you, when the road does open up on the Friday night, it, southbound is unrestricted. And then, as Rudy said, commercial vehicles, we are assessing going northbound, and that's because of the grade. They get stuck in there, and basically, as part of it goes up, it really backs up traffic, I mean, for miles.
Tracy, I have a question for you. When the governor declares an emergency, and, and does he notify all of his state agencies? Because we had heard that initially the Valley of Fire was, was charging access fees to cars that were coming through, and clearly, that's something that probably immediately, as soon as it was declared an emergency, that that should have, that they should have been notified so that they...
Well, they opened up the, the D E M, that the, we basically started the emergency center. And I do know there was some, we had to take extra steps to coordinate with basically the Department of Interior for the Valley of Fire. And literally, we made a few calls to Washington, and they called back.
Valley of Fire is actually a state park, so that would have been a state.
It ended up being, though, literally going to Washington and back. I do know on a couple of those phone calls, just to make sure that there wasn't any issues. We were working with them. We were looking at having NHP escort them through. Usually, commercial traffic is restricted through there, so I do know they were being stopped. I, I don't have a full picture of it for you, but I do know literally Washington DC called and said, do you need any help? And do you want us to call? And it was the governor's office in DC.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of Tracy?
Thanks.
Chris?
So, in your mind, this was because of the flood event, the volume of rain. It's similar to what happened on the Mount Charleston Lower Kyle, I think, when the roadway gave out there. And again, that was several inches, and this was upwards of 4.67 inches, I think, by the end of that, that day. So, it was just a degradation in the volume rather than a levy, or we didn't have a flood project in the right place, or I just, I think people need to know that it's just one of those, Mother Nature was not happy about some of the deals that are being done across the city.
She kind of humbles us on a regular basis.
Yeah, she does.
Something like this, and it is, this more accurately shows some of the part on I-15, but it, like I said, it was just too much rain to be absorbed.
And to the construction workers that helped rescue the gentleman, the husband and wife whose car went in, God bless, and other people that helped her get out of the water. We were lucky that no one was killed, so I think that that's something that should keep in mind.
And on my state, I want to give full credit to our district office for jumping in and handling all of it. They coordinated everything with the contractors and had maintenance and construction crews basically.
They were there right away.
Since Monday.
Yeah, your staff deserves a thanks. I think Public Works and a variety of groups came together, so, but we were very fortunate in that way, I think. So, the length of time to redo this was again?
Friday night, the northbound lanes will be open. Basically, that'll be, traffic will be directed one lane in each direction.
Okay.
So, it'll be a pinch point, but we'll be able to actually travel on I-15 either way, because right now, like I said, the detour route is 77 miles.
Yeah, exactly.
And then we are expecting another week. That's the timeline I was given this morning cautiously, I'm going to say seven to 10 days. And we should have both sides repaired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Just a, a quick question also. You, you mentioned the state road, 168. What about 167? Is that the North Shore? Are they allowing commercial traffic on that? The one that is right after the dam? And, and I'll tell you why, it's because there was some confusion. NDOT was telling trucks they could not, but the Park Service was saying they could if they were delivering to Moappa, Logan Dale and Overton area. And I'm just wondering, is that, are we in coordination with?
Actually, we are working on the coordination there. I'm also hearing mixed reports back, so I just need to get to the bottom of exactly which, what the correct message is. We are working to try to get some, there is damage to the interchange going to Moappa, so there has been some unsafe shoulders, there's some big drops on it.
But that's the interchange from the I-15? Or what inter?
Yes.
Okay, I'm talking about the road that comes along the lake that goes through the Park Service land, and I can't remember if that's 167 or 168.
169?
160, it could be.
We are looking...
No one calls them by those names. I never remember. But it, it's the North Shore, Lake Shore Road that takes off from the dam, and you can continue to Henderson or take off again and go around the lake to...
I don't have a, a correct answer for you right now. I do know that we are working to coordinate deliveries into Moappa. We're looking to do it into Mesquite. We're looking to get it into the different areas. Obviously, the business there are concerned. It's a pinch point. I know Simplot has called us. We have arranged for NHP escort through some areas. Most of that is pretty well passed, so it's getting unrestricted, and hopefully by the end of the week, we should be back to semi-normal.
We also routed our Freeway Service Patrol vans up that detour also, so they can help any kind of motorists that have some flat tires or run on gas.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Ross?
Yeah, Commissioner G. Kellyani kind of brought my, my thought process. You know, these floodplains are, are challenging. We were on that meeting today, this morning, that, you know, this certainly brings awareness to those floodplains. Give us 95 as a good example. By Indian Interstation on my side of town, you know, a couple of inches of rain, one floodplain, it's 95 now. But I think, Commissioner, you said it, shout out to NDOT for working so quickly as well as Clark County Public Works in getting days to get this, a lifeblood of our commerce reopened as quickly as possible. So, I just want to thank them, publicly thank them for their speed, moving, doing this as quickly as possible, as well as us, thanks for leaving that, that contract. My understanding is they were already mobilized out and doing some other works and had the equipment.
Actually, that pinch, that area on I-15 actually fell within their construction zone, which is why we were able to get them right on it and basically through a change order.
And I understand, Tracy, that they're working 24/7, and I think, you know, that's, that's tough. I'm an employer, shout out to them. I'm trying to get this, this into 15.
But I think, as you've also pointed out, it points out how, in some ways, the, the importance of the transportation system going in that way, just that one event basically has crippled us for a couple of weeks.
Well, if I can, Madam Chair, think about if this happened on both sides of town, on I-15 headed south and I-15 north, where would we be? We'd have the soon-to-be Interstate 11, that I can tell my grandchildren will soon be built in their timeframe. But, you know, it, it is, it's concerning, and I think we as the RTC and, as well as NDOT, need to be cognizant of the importance of that commerce connector for us. That is our lifeblood other than the airport, and that's, that's quite significant. So, maybe this is an awakening that we need to be, I can't say we need to be better prepared. I think what you guys have done has been phenomenal already between you and Clark County, and so I think it is what it is. Just keep going, investment game.
But that also points out a lot of work that Tina is doing with the LVCVA, the LVGEA, and other, you know, Clark County and other entities that looking at the long-range transportation plans around. And this does exactly, it's a wake-up call of exactly how fragile it is.
General Manager Quigley?
I'd like to share anecdotally at that note. Both Rudy and I have been contacted by the Nevada Truckers Association to share with us what this is doing to commerce. At this point, the Retail Association is, is reporting that deliveries are getting here between 24 and 36 hours later than anticipated. One of the reasons that I, I share this with the board, because we may be asked to weigh in on it eventually, is that there are limitations to the number of hours that truckers can drive. They do have service hour limitations set by federal standards. Although the emergency declaration by the governor allows trucks to exceed those limitations strictly for the emergency itself, so for delivering medical supplies or for delivering equipment to the construction site, it does not pertain to the movement of commerce and common goods. So, the governor's office and Nevada Truckers Association are considering asking for a waiver of those service hours specifically so that goods can continue to get to and through Southern Nevada. Certainly, the Nevada Resort Association, the Chamber, and the LVGEA are going to be looking at their members to get a better understanding as to exactly what the impacts are in terms of getting goods here, and if so, then we need to collectively weigh in as a community in helping secure that service.
Thank you, Ms. Quigley. Will you keep us informed on that? Will you keep us informed on that?
I will, yeah. I'm talking regularly with them.
Thank you. And Tracy and Rudy, thank you very much for your presentations. And I, I believe Mayor Tobler, you had a comment you wanted to make?
Yeah, just, it, it was announced that there was the one meeting in Boulder City regarding the I-11 project, but we're also having another meeting next week. The 19th? 18th, yes. With, it's going to include both NDOT, RTC, and Boulder City. We're going to talk about, more about the I-11 project, asbestos problem, the results of the test, and a lot of just good information for our community as well. So, I want to thank the RTC for throwing that together and working with us on that.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the time now for public comment on items that are on the agenda. We have withdrawn number 21 and number 40, so if you wish to make a comment, this is the time to come forward and make a comment. And we have Jose Mendez. And your comments are limited to three minutes. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners and temporary Chairman and Woman Marsh. I'm here to raise an issue on item number 29, which is regarding the transport agreement that, I'm assuming that's already been approved. And I'm just here to express our concern because this company last year did an analysis on the MV bid, low bid proposal. Apparently, that analysis is going to cost, I'm assuming, I believe it cost almost $100,000 to do the analysis. And, and negotiating right now currently with MV, it doesn't look too bright. And not only did it cost RTC $100,000, it's probably going to cost a lot of more money when we approach our members to go ahead and take a strike vote. This company here does not understand or value our cost of living around here. But anyway, I'll get that into closing arguments, but my thing is that you should start considering when the RTC staff brings a proposal of a company. My understanding this company's from Florida, and we, we say they blew the last analysis with MV on the low bid, and they shouldn't, perhaps the RTC Commission should have looked more into it. And that's basically why we're here, to complain on this item number 29 on the transport company. And I'll reserve my rights on the closing comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Fran Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Fran Smith with ITN Las Vegas Valley, which is trying valiantly to become United Riders. That will take place. I just want to thank the Commissioners. Item 38 is authorizing the donation of several vans to us, and this especially comes at a really outstanding time. As many of you may know, we took over the city of Henderson Senior Transportation to and from Heritage Park Senior Facility in August, thanks in part to a grant from the RTC. That program is turning out to be three times larger than we anticipated, so we're dedicating more vehicles and drivers to the program so these vans come at an ideal time so that we're able to meet the demand for not only that program, but the ongoing demand for all of our services. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Fran. Thank you for working with us. And the next item, Ms. Quigley? And the next item, Ms. Quigley?
Uh, our next is your consent to jump back, which is I-15, 5, 39.
And that, uh, is, and 21 and 40 are, or 21 on the consent is withdrawn. Okay, do we have a motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Next item?
Your next item then is your last citizen's participation.
Okay, this is the time for public comment. Uh, do we have some cards? Thank you. Okay, um, and comments will be limited to a three-minute period. First is Jason Funk.
I have a question about the, the wifi on the buses. I know it's only on, it's a tail route.
Could you lean into the microphone?
Oh, sorry. So it's only on the tail routes right now, the, uh, pilot program? And I was just wondering when it's gonna be added to the rest of the routes?
And that's certainly something we can talk to you about afterwards. Uh, next. 2015? Um, next is Dennis Hennessy.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for allowing me an opportunity to speak. My name is Patricia Penisi. I have been riding, uh, RTC paratransit for the last six years. I have lupus vasculitis, lupus which has affected my vision. Without the paratransit service, I would have a very tiny life. I would probably be at home counting pennies to take a cab or hoping a neighbor would take me somewhere. The service has allowed me to be productive, things I need to do for myself, things I choose to do such as volunteer. The issues that I have had with the bus have all been lovely, lovely, lovely service. Operation, buses are clean, drivers speak English. If I took a cab, it would probably be someone with two cell phones going, a dispatch radio going, uh, a trace of an accent and no language. What I'd like to discuss this morning quickly is the grandfather clause. ADA law states that if you are more than three quarters of a mile away from a fixed route, they do not need to provide service to your door. You would have to go, I would have to go to the nearest location that was closest to being in that three quarters of a mile for them to pick me up door to door. I live two long blocks out of district. 2011, we were grandfathered in. 2012, we were grandfathered in. There's only about 300 of us, you could get the numbers, uh, from RTC. As of July 215, we would be required to go to a location somewhere closest to three quarters of a mile. I'm here to ask that we remain under the grandfather clause. I know that all new riders as of 2012, who are out of that three quarters of a mile, are now being required to, uh, go to another location. The service is lovely, the men and women are dedicated. If anyone has some sort of an accident on the bus, the biohazard, you know, it, it becomes a biohazard, the buses are immediately taken out of service. It's a lovely service for which I'm grateful, but I'm just asking if we could please remain under the, um, 2012 grandfather clause. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. And I believe that staff is looking into this and so in the future, we'll have something to report on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dennis Hennessy.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for, uh, allowing me this time to give you a monthly update of our dirty driving, which I will in just a moment. But first off, I'd like to express to the Commissioners our gratitude as a driver. My name's Dennis Hennessy, I'm a driver for Keolis. Uh, I drive the strip, uh, love driving the strip. Notice that we move 1.1 million people a month. I want to do a shout out for staff. Um, last month, I quoted an interesting quote. Ms. Marsh, you weren't here. Uh, Commissioner Ross, you weren't here either. Uh, my quote was to inspect what you expect. That was a Thursday morning at the last council meeting. Friday evening at eight and nine o'clock, Saturday evening following the Thursday meeting at eight or nine o'clock. Staff, not just ambassadors, but staff was out on the strip checking to see if Allied Barton security personnel were on our buses. Thank you. I bet. Comments from drivers way on the other side of town saying that the response time is great. So thank you for your attention. And again, you hear, you hear nothing but negatives a lot of times. I just want to say thank you, we appreciate that. Now, it's time for, as we know on channel 13, we have dirty dining. If we were a restaurant, our buses would be on dirty dining every night. The company you have chosen to clean our buses, last month it was bus 158 that was just about ready to pull out of the yard to go service some of those 1.1 million people. Last night, same location at the Sunset Lot, I went to coach number 164. Bus had been cleaned, signed off, ready to go out. This, dirtier than coach 158 last month. That was the floors, that's just the floors. This is the driver area, the passenger area, the fairbox area. This is what our 1.1 million people are seeing. And I'd like to say, hey, we got some improvement from last month to this month, but we didn't. Did have a safety meeting at Keolis and the safety guy that gave the meeting said, oh, saw ya, saw ya at the meeting, oh, oh, we support, we're trying to put pressure on the company that's doing. You know what? There's no pressure. I'm gonna ask you people to inspect what you expect. Take your hands and slap a seat and see the dander and the stuff that goes flying up in the air. And by the way, the company that, that Silver State that does that, you'll be pleased to know they're doing such a good job cleaning our buses that you all have now promoted them, that no longer do we have RTC staff collecting the money through our probe. We've got Silver State doing it. So it won't be long, it won't be long before when the money's missing, you'll take action.
Thank you, Mr. Hennessy, thank you.
This is filth.
Our next presenter, or our next speaker is Randy B., Joe's. Randy?
Hi, I'm Randy Botsett, Vice President and Business Agent of Teamsters Local 631 here in Las Vegas. We just want to kind of give you a, a transit, uh, update as well. We finished our collective bargaining with, uh, Veolia, now TransDev. Went pretty smooth, we got some good improvements with them. Currently in negotiations with MV, uh, with their senior transportation division. We got a recognized by them, we're moving through that, we're almost finished with that contract as well. So we just kind of wanted to update. Thank, uh, Robert and his team for moving this real fast, so that's pretty much what we have, unless you've got something to say.
Well, whatever he said, but I do have something to say.
Thank you.
I'd like to add on to their report card that, uh, you know-
For you, for the record, could you provide me with your name?
My name is Joe Sampson, Teamsters Local 631. I'd, I'd, uh, liking our relationship right now, it's like a marriage. It's up and down. Uh, it's not perfect. But one thing that I do like is that they do listen. So with that, if this is something that you can add to their report card, is that they're really trying hard, that's what we see. We're not getting a lot of complaints from the people that we serve. And I just think it's important that, um, that they get whatever support that they need from the RTC so it translates to their employees. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next, Jose Mendez? Mendoza, I'm sorry.
Again, Jose Mendoza, Junior ATU President for Local 1637, re- representing the fixed routes. I wish I could say the same thing as the brothers from the Teamsters that they're, they're doing a good, uh, negotiation with MV. Uh, while we're negotiating with MV, it's not going too good. Like I said earlier, uh, we will not take a 1% that's been offered on table. We will not take anything that they want to take what we currently have. And they think that this is a game. It is not a game for us. We've been here almost 16, 17 months trying to get a contract. And apparently to them, it's, seems like it's a game. Uh, last week, we TA'd, uh, three sections that last year could have been TA'd. Just minor changes in the language of the contract that we currently have with Veolia. And that's all it took, the owner to come down. I hate to say this, but I wish, uh, Mr. Keating here, uh, should stop being a hypocrite. Uh, we are not his drivers or the RTC's drivers, we're subcontracted drivers. And if we are gonna be the RTC drivers, then, uh, the RTC Commissioners should start looking into it, because apparently Mr. Keating says it's up to you guys. Um, I don't like being here and criticizing you guys, but it's a fact, and that's what's going on. Uh, the form that's going on, it's, it's, it's a positive. Uh, $68 million of fairbox revenue was collected, uh, to include the 3.1 million dollars that goes to the covers on the, on the wrapping of the buses, so that's over $70 million. Uh, thank God that you guys removed that, uh, pilot program so far about the big bus, because we had some big issues on that. But in the meantime, we are still negotiating, uh, but we're not going to go with MV. Uh, Keolis wants a different route, but at the same time, we're still negotiating with them. Uh, again, uh, perhaps it's time to terminate this contract with MV and seek another source how to do it. Uh, because you will be seeing some problems on the north side of, of Las Vegas, which is Mr. Keating's side. Uh, we don't want it, but the drivers are ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mendoza. Is there, I'm out of cards, is there anyone else who wishes to comment? Please provide your name for the record.
Sam Santoria, Vice President, ATU 1637. I just want to reach out to MJ and Carl Scarsborough. Uh, we had some problems with bus stops that were unsafe. They stepped up, they took care of them, they let us know what's going on in the future. I've also even had trouble with traffic signals where I was able to contact Carl and everything was fine. Uh, this big bus program that you're talking about, on my way here this morning, there's buses already doing it, tour buses that are out there in our bus stops. I took pictures, I just sent them to you, MJ. And also Jerry, I agree with the President, a few times you commented, our, our drivers. And, you know, that's nice that you think we're your drivers, and we don't mind being your drivers, but when it's time to come up and maybe help out with the contract, treat us like your drivers and tell MV they're not gonna go to a two-tier system and they're not gonna allow part-time, so quit pushing it across the table. We're almost at the end of the line now. There's about three more meetings and that'll be it. We're gonna be calling for the strike vote. And I'm sure these people are gonna be sick of it and they're gonna say, yeah, let's strike. I don't want to see it. I really don't. I'd rather have harmony and, and everybody's happy and keep working. Why should anybody get hurt even for a day of pay? Step up, Jerry. We're your drivers, our drivers. And the safety issues, as far as that, I'm glad you're moving forward on that. That's awesome, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Patricia. For the record, would you provide your name?
Yes, I'm Carolyn Higgins. Good morning. Um, I'm just basically here, um, in looking at the report that you guys are providing to the Commissioners and to everyone. You have Veolia and then you have the company. And you're lumping us as one. You're two different yards, we have two different contracts going on, there are two different actions that are going on for the employees. So in your future reports, could you divide them up? And yes, RTC is, MJ is there in the, in the focus group and I-10. And yes, there's a lot of good input coming out of there. But if you guys can just divide up the report and not lump us as one, because in our current contracts that we're negotiating, they are not lumping us as one. And that's what we had asked initially when the yards were split. They are very different. So if you guys can do that for us, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you for your feedback. Is there anyone, anyone else that wishes to speak? This way. For the record, would you, uh, share your name and your company?
My name's Wayne Fritz. I'm the Vice President and General Manager for MV Transportation. Uh, Acting Chairwoman and Marsh, Members of the Commission. I, I would like to say that I, from our perspective, that those issues are moving along. Uh, they're, uh, slow but sure. Progress is being made. We have now entered into, uh, discussing economic items and we are very hopeful and we're looking to have an agreement in the very near future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at this time? Thank you. Would you put your name on the record?
Good morning, I'm, uh, Kevin Adams, uh, Executive Vice President, General Manager, Keolis Transit America. I'd just like to comment briefly on our, uh, current status for our labor negotiations with the ATU. Uh, they're moving along very well. Had two meetings this week, another five meetings, uh, two meetings next week and another five, uh, scheduled for October. And, uh, things are actually moving along quite well. I think, uh, I'm looking forward to hopefully, uh, coming to a conclusion in October, positive conclusion. Uh, believe it or not, uh, you know, the meetings are pretty much positive. Uh, Jose actually smiles. He does, hopefully he's smiling now. Anyway, they are moving along and, and we feel pretty good about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. For the record, would you state your names?
My name is Joseph Campbell. I'm, I'm a fixed route driver for MV. Um, I only have a couple of comments. Um, one on the, uh, negotiations. They are moving along, but I don't understand a one percent increase. I mean, um, most jobs don't really give something that small. And even if it does go across, the taxes is gonna kill the 1%. Um, depending on if you have dependents or no dependents. And to me, that doesn't make much sense. But I understand they have to put something across so they're not, um, accused of dragging their feet. But I do understand that 1% is not enough. I mean, 5%, that's, that's, that's different, but 1% is not, not worth nothing. My second comment is, um, on your, um, guys' uh, um, time points for all the drivers. I don't think you guys took in consideration that the exact time of getting a ADA person in actually takes four minutes. It seems that you have, um, it put down just for people who, who can actually walk on the bus and pay their money and keep going, but when you have to open the doors and open the, open the, the bridge and get them on, that takes at least three minutes. So if you, if you have seven minutes to get to the next one, you're already gonna be behind by the time you strap them in and get through the, the question and answer, um, time. I don't know if you guys took that in consideration, maybe adding a few minutes each stop, because, um, the ADA can be at any stop at any time. Um, my, um, third, um, um, statement, I want you guys to, um, understand is that, you know, I, I, I love working for MV and I love, um, driving your guys' buses, but, um, I really, I really think you should take a look at, um, how MV came in, because, um, to put it in perspective, I don't know if you guys ever, um, um, played the game of spades, but when you run the bid, that's, that's really speaking like a character. And come in with a low bid, that's, I don't think that's the right way to go, because to me, it seems they have something to hide. So just keep that in mind, and I think.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Did we, uh, no, we can't, sorry, you've already spoken. Thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, this meeting is adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, excuse me, Commissioner.
We want to speak, Madam Chair. But you are running this week so efficiently. With your permission, Madam Chair and, and Commissioner Members, I want to shout out again to Sue Joseph, your husband. Sue, thank you again for your years of service to Southern Nevada. Wonderful family, wonderful folks. Have a great time in retirement. Wish we were all going with you. Um, that being said, Madam Chair, um, I want to shout, I want to give Joe from the Teamsters a little hard time. Randy really looks good in that tie, Joe. Just, just saying, okay? Tina, I think, uh, I think it will be important for us on, uh, not every meeting, but the fuel index, fuel revenue indexing has been, becomes such an important, crucial part of what we're trying to do for our transportation needs in Southern Nevada, um, that we've, from time to time, get a report of- to time, get a report of how many dollars are out there on the street, how many, how many jobs have we created, the status of the project. And I say that because I want this community to understand how important that revenue is to transportation needs and getting people from point A to point B. I think it is so important. You know, we hoop a lot of, when it happened, and we do it every time a project starts, but I think we need to carry that conversation on and on and on for the benefit of all of our communities in Southern Nevada.
Very good. We'll plan an update for you.
And I want to highlight this, too. I've seen local employers, local firms, local engineering companies, local vendors on these projects, and I think that is quite significant for us and very meaningful for us to boast that, that we're employing Southern Nevada workers and Southern Nevada businesses and keeping them going. So there's going to come a time when we have to, the voters have to vote on this. And I don't want them to forget how crucially important it is that we continue this program for the benefit of Southern Nevada. So that's my request through the Chair, to the General Manager.
Noted.
If we could do that from time to time, to say, "Hey, I want to talk about this real quick," in your General Manager's report, and say, "This is what we're doing today, and this is how it's affecting our community."
Very good. Thank you very much.
It's a great idea, Commissioner.
Thanks. I wasn't going to say anything about that, but I would also say, because as an elected entity, we're not allowed to PR anything when the ballot question comes down. So it's helpful at least to have the public educated. So that's a very good point, to make sure that we're messaging it and it's not a campaign.
Yeah, we educate, we don't advocate.
Correct.
Leave the advocating to us.
Second thing, I just wanted to, you know, folks have been talking at several of the meetings about the issue of the drivers and whether they are employees or subcontracted. And I think we just need to clear it up. As much as when I thought CAT first started, I felt that the drivers should have been employees, their decision was made not to do it as that and to be private. I know that several folks have come forward in the past meetings to say that they need to be RTC, they need to be RTC employees. That's not going to happen. And so I think it needs to be clear, because the focus needs to be on resolving, negotiating an entire contract, which really does take time. So I commend the Teamsters for getting things done. But you've got to work through your process, Joe and Sam and your group. I think you've attentively agreed to far more than what we hear about. But I do need, you know, I'm not speaking for the Board, but I do believe there's no approach, attempt, intent to change employees of the drivers to RTC employers. And we just need to be honest and fair about that part of it. As to the pilot, I don't personally support a pilot program. I don't think it warrants it. Plus, it's not even RTC's role, in my opinion, because it really is up to the local governments where they allow for the stops. But we do need to look into tour buses using our stops. That's inappropriate in and of itself. And then finally, one person confronted one of my constituents after the last meeting. It's a gentleman that's in the wheelchair, and I won't say any names, but I'm going to tell you, you come through me if you mess with him. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? I'd just like to thank the NDOT for their quick response in this emergency we experienced from Southern Nevada. We appreciate the partnership that we have with you, and there are issues that we have to resolve going forward, but we're continuing to work closely with you. We appreciate that. Thank you very much. Go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you.